I would like to pause the order please again for the public. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. There was no executive session held tonight, so that was not needed, so there was no executive session held. Roll call, please.
Ister, Savage, Roche, Barhart.
Just let you know, for everyone to know, John Barhart is calling from online. He is away at the moment. I do have three additions to the agenda. One is to add the 2025 CDVG first hearing. Second is to add the resignation of Derek Backer, and the third is to add unnamed alley for Jim Brimbal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ister, Barhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes. Moving on, is there any public comment at this time? Any public comment? I'm gonna start in front, work my way back. Please state your name, sir.
Jim Brimbal. Last week, I was not real familiar with what you were doing as far as picking a new council member. Okay, a lot of people don't know I'm not as well-known as these other folks up here. I'm sure they're all capable, but I think I have a lot to add to this position. Okay, over fifty years in the offshore business, Pennsylvania real estate license, which I got just to perform sales in property transfers and sold. I spent a lot of time out in Mason City, Iowa, at a school there. Got the Pennsylvania license here. And I had some pretty good dealings over the years with a lot of people. I sold a lot of properties in Sundary. We renovated a lot of properties in Sundary, which we sold. And, one, this will only take a second, I don't want to bore anybody, but the Colonial Building Shopping Center across the river was that vacant for years. Nobody's interested in the property. I profiled one day and then decided I'm gonna buy that property today. Went to the Realtors Office down near Harrisburg. Walked in, old man, I said, "You're interested in me?" He lit up like a firefly. I was like, "I wanted to..." Went in there and asked him about it. Told me the price, told me who owned it, and he said the price is not negotiable. The vacant lots go on the property. I said, "Okay." He said, "What do you want to put down?" I said, "Nothing." "You want to buy that property?" I said, "Yes." "Nothing down, Mr. Correct." So then, I said, "On top of that, I want a loan from the bank to bring the property up to code. I want no payments for one year on the loan or the property." Well, they said the bank won't vote for that. I said, "It's your obligation to notify the bank. If you don't, I will call in tomorrow." Called me next morning, he said, "Jimmy, he said you own the property." So, I mean, it just goes to show that if you turn your head the right way, you're gonna see things that other people don't see. And I think, I really think that I could be a good partner in the city council for other things other than Mr. Jimmy Brimbal.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Please state your name, ma'am.
Sandra Hine. I'm here with Secretary of Justice Bohan at the LCAT program. And the reason I'm bringing it up now, I was planning on doing it at the end. I did not realize that Derek Backer was gonna be leaving. Did not know that this afternoon when he talked to me. We are going to need someone from, from this group to work with us with, with Penn State while getting this done. We, I'll just go ahead and give you my report. We came to this meeting to let you know what was happening with the local climate action plans. We have been accepted into Penn State's program. So all those things that I talked about before will, will transpire. August 25th, I think, that week, we will be introduced to our students. We would also like to include counsel on that, so you can talk to them about next steps. And their, their first semester is going to be collecting emissions data. And Derek has already sent some letters out to people, whatever Penn State has recommended. There seems to be some more coming that will need to be taken care of. And the two student, the two students is difficult. The, the first semester, they will be entering Sundary's vision data into the Clean Pass program? Clearback program, which will by November, early December, they will come back to you. And we would like the whole council there again. They will give an overview of what they found with the data. And then, from that, we will, from January to April, the students and a committee of both government and citizen members will work together to present recommendations in the spring. And the other thing we want to do as a group is have a community survey to help set priorities.
Alright, thank you.
Sandy, just to know, I do have a list of committees and everything that I'm giving to council that they need to designate some board here, if that's on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Bill Brown. I live up on North 7th Street. I've been in the city over fifty years. I'm a registered Republican. As far as I know right now, the Northumberland County Democratic and Republican Party have both backed their nomination, their nominees for November's special election. You're a Republican. The man that isn't here tonight is also a registered and voted in Republican. You guys need to do something for the party and send it straight and quit making such a show of what's going on in this city council chamber. We need to set somebody at the seat that's vacated. Till November, obviously, like I said, in November, the Republican and the Democratic names are here tonight as registered Republicans and voted in Republicans. And I didn't vote for either one of these this election. I voted for my dog in this place, and I voted for your opponent. So that shows you what I think about all the people, most of the people up here. I'm not here to make friends, man. I'm here to move Sundary forward. We need to make a decision tonight, and you two need to be Republicans and stand up to it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, ma'am.
Victoria, let's again make a public comment. As one of the candidates sitting up here tonight, and along with Mr. Ramos, when the council went to a two-two vote, we had to petition the court, which cost us $132.50. And what I'd also like to say is, this city isn't about party lines, okay? It's not about that. It's about picking the people up here who have experience, who have been doing the work for many years, and whether you like me or you don't like me because I expose things and I speak out and I'm an activist or whatever. And so, here's the thing, all of these folks sitting up here tonight, except for Mr. Brimbal, were all in the ballot in November. So what I say is, let the citizens pick. So there's you have it, Mr. Brimbal.
Thank you.
So I say, I say put Mr. Brimbal up there and let the citizens decide who sits in that seat for two years. Thank you. Wish you luck, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Alright, so I'm gonna move the meeting to recess for the 2025 CDVG first reading for Jamie.
Thank you very much. Alright, so tonight is the first public hearing for your 2025 CDVG program. I thank everybody for doing the signing sheet back there at the podium. It's the first step in creating the city's 2025 CDVG three-year plan. CDVG program was created through an act of Congress. It is a federal program. It comes through the Department of Housing and Urban Development down to the state of Pennsylvania, where it is administered by DCD. Pennsylvania Act 179 is what creates the entitlement program that DCD uses to distribute the funds. That act outlines an allocation formula for municipalities in Pennsylvania and counties to receive funds. The purpose of the program is to enhance the viability of communities by funding projects that provide housing, a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities, principally to low and moderate income persons. Tonight, in the, in the agenda packet that was also back there, is the schedule for the CDVG program. Project summaries are due to me by August 22nd. We'll do project review and finalization at the meeting on August 25th. The final public hearing, is that the sound right? That's right, okay, this is my part. The final public hearing will then be September 22nd here at council. That's when we will also execute the resolution to submit the application. The city will not have its funds in hand until 2026. Some of these dates could change. We'll do notices if they do change. The 2025 allocation to the city is $308,916,000. CDVG funds need to meet two different hurdles to be, to be used for projects. They can be used to carry out a wide range of community development activities, such as water reservoirs, street improvements or reconstruction, stormwater, recreation, fire equipment, removal of architectural barriers, revitalization, economic development, and community services for facility improvements. It's easier to say that activities that are not eligible are operation and maintenance, political expenses, new housing construction, and the purchase of equipment unless you're doing it for a public service or the fire department. And you also cannot do work in the building generally government unless it's a removal of architectural barriers project. The larger hurdle for CDVG funding is that the project must meet one of three national objectives. The principal one is the benefit to principally low and moderate income persons, meaning 51% of the, or more of the individuals benefiting have to be low and moderate income. This is the objective we use the most, and 70% of the city's funds do need to meet this national objective. The second way you could qualify a project is under elimination of smaller blight. It requires a declaration of a blighted property or blighted area. We use this occasionally for demolition of deteriorated structures, and you can use a maximum of 30% of the funds for that. The third one, which we rarely use but has come up in the recent past, is a response to urgent need. This requires a formal declaration of an emergency or disaster. That could be local, state, federal. You can only be an emergency that's occurred within the last eighteen months. It can only be used to eliminate the emergency, and it basically has to be something that the city did not budget for. And again, a maximum of 30% of the funds could be used for that. So to apply for this funding in the packet here, and also may have that to all the groups across the city, we had a project summary form. So the municipality can fund their own projects. You can get projects from the municipal authority, different community development organizations, nonprofits, those types of entities generally apply for this funding. There is no set match requirement. If you do apply for a project for funding, council would like to see that you do have some skin in the game for your project. We also consider the financial need, so if a project comes in, we'll look at what the need is and what the timing and the schedule is to get that project done. As I said, the funds aren't available till 2026, so anything that needs done next month obviously isn't gonna get funded with this money. Something to keep in mind if you are applying for a project, especially an infrastructure-type project, is this money comes with all the federal regulations, which means federal prevailing wage. So whatever you think it's going to cost, you might as well double it, put that on your application. So the project summary form is here tonight in the packet that's on the podium, or if you need one, you can just see me and I can get that. We have a couple of things that we do need to go over for the CDVG program. Each year we go over these. There's a fair housing notice attached to the packet. The city of Sundary has adopted and published a fair housing analysis and has established a plan for further fair housing in the city. The fair housing notice is posted downstairs. The anti-displacement plan is also a requirement of the CDVG program, and it is attached to the packet. It is intended for the city to undertake activities that do not result in displacement of residents. However, for some reason, projects were to displace residents, this plan would tell you what needs to happen to, to replace those housing units. Section 504, annual review. Again, this information is attached to the packet. As each year's prior application, we solicit public input on accessibility of the city's facilities and programs to learning, mobility, visually impaired hearing, and language impaired persons. If the public is aware of any need for modifications to any cities, any of the city's facilities or programs to increase accessibility, you could, either you can let me know, or you can let the city's 504 officer know. And during this hearing, I give you an opportunity to comment if you have any concerns on accessibility. The city administrator position is the 504 officer. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about accessibility in the city?
Yes. Kurt, representing the sweep project.
Okay.
So we didn't have the funding for the North 6th Street and Lion Street road crossing. We have a debt already engineered and blueprints for the sweep plan, but I believe it was $6,900 to make that crossing accessible. And at that time, it would connect the Goodwill playground and the open up other divots, and connect to the entrances to the sweep project.
Okay, alright, I'll make note of that one. Thank you, Kurt. And the final regulatory piece that we'd like to speak to is the Section 3 pressure statement that is on the bottom of your agenda. It basically defines the Section 3 residence or business, and part of the CDVG program is to make opportunities available to Section 3 residents or businesses. If anyone feels they need that definition or know a business that needs that definition, please feel free to reach out to me. You can put them on the list to get bid solicitations. So right now, with projects that we have underway, such as we have Avenue Phase 2 is coming up. We did wrap up Phase 1, and Phase 2 will be starting probably next year. That would be the plan right now. At this time, I'd like to open the floor if anybody has any proposals they'd like to, projects they'd like to propose for funding. I'll serve counsel, anyone? Anyone? Yes, Jody.
Jody Offner, representing Sundary Generalization Incorporated. We have, I have three hot school projects that I could discuss. The first one is Stroll Alley Improvement Project. This is a project that the Blue Print Community's Downtown Sundary team has also identified. We have a $10,000 grant for that project at present. The issue with that Stroll Alley is that there's no shade. It's not in very good shape. There's some stormwater issues. And we would like to make it into more of a inviting community space for people, residents. It would also help to simulate foot traffic in the downtown, getting a really nice place for people to, to hang out and connect. The things that we want to address in this project are to, are to resurface it, to fix some stormwater drainage issues, to provide shade, seating, accessibility with some ADA curb cuts on either end, and safety with lighting and some color just with the shade sales and planters and murals. So that's a very brief summary of that project. And then, for two and three, I don't have really a well-developed, but they're simple projects. One is a system for kayaks at the city docks, so that people of all abilities are able to get in and out of the water safely. There are some that are ADA accessible, that, say, somebody gets in a wheelchair, can get down there, transfer into a kayak, and get into the water and get out. So that's one. And then the other one is some shade for the amphitheater. It is not used as much as it probably could be because of the, the shade, especially, you know, obviously in the summertime. So, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Send those over to me and I'll put them all together. Alright, anyone else?
Yeah. I would like to look, like press to look at basketball courts to expand recreational in the city.
New basketball courts?
I'm open to refurbishing or new.
Can we add pickleball courts to that as well?
You can add a little bit.
What kind of playground would pickleball courts be, basketball courts?
When is that open?
Well, there was a group that wanted to use it and added a key.
Well, if you don't have a key, how can you do that? You're not in that group.
Well, yes.
So if I'm, if I wanna go in at, well, now that I'm having a conversation.
Is there basketball courts playing, pick-up basketball in the city?
Not, that's open 24 hours a day.
Not that you want in there.
Yeah, but during, but during the daylight hours, there's not one that is open.
This is the, like, that one?
Which one? That's not ours. I mean, we manage it, but that's not our property. We maintain that, so my office and the church group is taking care of that.
And the OP during the summertime, they're open.
If we can throw less money into refurbishing, I'm open to that option as well.
Okay. Yep. I am aware of some street projects that are coming up in the city that we may be able to put funding into ADA curb ramps. So that's something the places often do is put money into. Since you have to replace the ADA ramps anyway, when you're doing a street project, oftentimes I want to put funding into those for CDVG. Some stormwater or utility work on some projects that might be coming up. So those are things that are brought in.
I had a question when you said the emergency declaration and everything. Does that work have to not be done and performed, or could you reverse for work that you did that with?
No, it has to be going forward, which makes urgency very difficult, because it has to be.
You had to leave it alone, basically.
Yeah, it has to be, so, like, outside of COVID, most of the time it's only been used, like, in flooding and since, say, like, in the power outage, you know, maybe if you're in a flood, you'd be able to use that to do things. If they had money sitting around. Mostly it's if you have money sitting around that you all of a sudden need. But yeah, right now, yeah, looking at 2026, there's nothing we're gonna fund as a urgent need.
Jim, what about the tennis courts and their surface? Isn't that breaking down? Need to be replaced here in the near future? It's cracking and so on?
I think something, I'd rather take and spend money with the Sundary Fire Department for consolidation. Work on a project for next year. I know you've had a lot of costs that occurred, and something we have to provide in some way.
Yeah, we have to buy fire equipment, so that is something, that's like, well, the only type of equipment pretty much that we're allowed to purchase with CDVG funds is a fire truck, hose, turnout gear, et cetera.
John, John Ferrai, Assistant Chief in Sundary. We actually do need quite a bit of hose. For hose testing this year, we've been sent, or scrapping sections from the 70s. And the manufacturers recommended life for hose is 10 years, so it's way overdue.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Just a question. Can you do, use that for air packs?
Yes. Yep. I'm doing that right now. So something to keep in mind as you do submit your projects, Jody, Fire Company, whoever wants to submit, who's gonna benefit from it? So in the city here, we do have citywide LMI, Low and Moderate Income, by the ACS, the American Community Survey Data. So if it is a city-wide benefit, then that automatically qualifies. What's the budget? Are you already working with an engineer? Do you need to have an engineer brought on board? And how quickly, as I said, do you need this to happen? Are there any concerns or questions about any sort of environmental or historical impacts of the CDVG program? Alright, nothing else? That is your answer. Thank you.
Alright, I reconvene our council meeting. So moving on here for council nomination slash vote on the empty seat. So with John and the council members, does anyone have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Andrew very much.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Alright, without a second, the motion fails. Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? I have a question. With three of the, well, four of the five of you being on the ballot for November, would you exclude yourself from tonight's vote and have it seem as being let the people decide come November and have Mr. Brimbal to be the only candidate?
I would, I would myself up.
You would do that, or would you do the same? Alright, so I'll make the motion for Mr. Jim Brimbal. Do I have a second?
Does it, can the second come from the floor? Well, the council needs to go to work.
I'll say it now.
Barhart. Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Alright, with that being said, Mr. Brimbal, you are now the current acting council member. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I stake your name.
James Brimbal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support.
I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Con- Constitution of the Commonwealth.
I will discharge. The duty of my office.
The duty of my office.
As a city council member.
As a city council member.
Congratulations, sir. Mr. Brimbal, please take your seat.
There's a whole strange number on the other side of the table.
Let me get it in. James, you have a statement?
I do. So I want to just recognize that, you know, I think it's obviously deadlocked. A few weeks ago, went to the court. Some people petitioned the court. It's come back. I want to commend all of you for raising your hands a few minutes ago. And I want to emphasize the fact that one of you will be joining a random assortment of people up on this board. So it might be us working together, it might be any combination of any of you, and I just want to emphasize the fact that I respect that all of you did that and took the politics out of it and emphasized the fact that the board, while we deadlocked, did the same in a roundabout way. So I just want to call attention to that, and thank you all. And now we have tiebreakers.
Alright, moving on. Alright, I made the motion of approval and minutes, minutes from July 14th and 28th. Meetings and reports from the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Controller, Total Office, Health Department, Parks Director, and Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Barhart.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Ister. Oh, sorry, Mr. Brimbal.
Yes.
Moving on, there is no old business, but there is new business to the additions. We'll first go with the unnamed alley for Mr. Brimbal before, obviously, toward disposition.
Yes, for everyone's edification, in prior meetings, we have discussed returning an alley back to Mr. Brimbal and his property. The alley is about 30 feet by 30 feet somewhat, but we can't do that without a legal description, that I have learned. I thought the alley would be legally described already, but it's not. So what I'm asking for is a motion from council to allow me to have Met Tech give me a legal description for that area, so that I can have it transferred over to Mr. Brimbal to take care of.
I will make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Brimbal.
He abstains.
Barhart. Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Just to clarify, there's nothing she in this meeting here.
No, absolutely not.
This thing's open for two years. Two years.
Alright, moving on, the resignation, Mr. Backer. Would you like to speak about that, sir?
Sure.
Sure. Um, I'm writing for Harley's and in my two week's notice of resignation from my position as City Administrator for the City of Sunbury effective end of date this day on August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Decision was not made lightly, and working for the city has been a meaningful and rewarding experience. And grateful for the opportunity that I've had to contribute to the Sunbury community and collaborate on such dedicated colleagues. Learned a great deal during my time here and will carry those lessons with me for the next chapter of my career. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve the City of Sunbury and I wish the city to continue.
All right, thank you, sir.
Statement. Did a nice job. I enjoyed working with you. Well, enough years ago to watch, I'm sorry. But, uh, we're not missing.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right, so I put that in the form of a motion for Mr. Backer's resignation after the end of date of the day on eight twenty five. Do I have a second?
Savage?
Yes.
Brumball?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes. Moving on, uh, amendment to the shade tree ordinance first reading. Uh, John, just let your discip- because you weren't here, uh, Steve and Joe had a conversation. Um, we're just going to table that for the next meeting. There were a few additional changes that Steve wanted to put in there. So we're just going to, so I vote to table that until next meeting. Do I have a second?
A second.
Eister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Brumball?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, John, you want to do the next one? I know that agenda in front of you, if you want me just to do the agreement.
Yeah, would you please, uh, let, uh, is Mike Thomas, or can, uh, you operate on that?
No, he's, uh, Joe is here.
Yeah, um, Mr. Backwards was previously employed as our city engineer. Um, and he had also been previously employed as our conflict engineer. His contract ended, um, just because it ran out of time. We, we are moving to have him re, um, hired as a conflict engineer to handle any projects that Met Tech is unable to handle due to unethical conflict.
Questioning one? All right, so I make the motion to accept the agreement of employment for the conflict engineer. Do I have a second?
A second.
Brumball?
Yes.
Eister? Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on, do you come dividend checks? So about a couple of weeks ago, we got a check from our, uh, from unemployment provider that I guess they had a good quarter and we got a reimbursement check for thirteen hundred dollars, I think it was thirteen hundred and twenty-three dollars for some change. So I guess we have to decide where we would like to put those funds, obviously, to be put for use. My one suggestion is that we're doing a lot of community service in the front office there. Right now we have over eighteen hundred dollars of, I mean, she's eighteen hundred, she's eighteen hundred hours of community service. And obviously, we need to do supplies to do that. Just recently, we have all the meter posts repainted here last month. Right now, we're currently having a young man complete his Eagle Scout to do, to repaint the fire hydrants around town. And obviously, those things cost money to do, the paint, the materials, so on and so forth. So that's where I'd like the money to be put back into so we can continue these community service projects to grow the city forward, to do these different things. I didn't know if council had a different idea where they'd like to put the money, but that's just the suggestion that I have.
This is put in line item for shortfall in that, uh, compensation fund.
You're talking, you're talking about in general or for?
No, for.
The community service?
Unemployment compensation fund, like, I got a line item in case there's a shortfall next year, there's some seed money there.
Are we actually going to put it back into line item or throw it in the general fund and then?
Actually, Josh, you should go back into unemployment, top, and fire. So she just go, I've been buying the painting.
Oh, you did? I didn't know, because I was unaware. What about all the stuff down the, like, the cemetery, did you got, did you buy that also?
I guess I've been buying it because I just buy it somewhere.
Well, I mean, it's, it's come out of my budget under the one line item, the PR and that kind of stuff. We're taking money out of there for stuff, so.
I don't know, just, you know, I don't.
Okay.
I'd like to bring that, that you put it in some of that line item for other stuff.
All right, well, if anybody wants to make a motion, they can.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Roche?
No.
Brumball?
Yes.
Barnhart?
No.
Eister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes. All right, uh, moving on, uh, Mr. Eister, Councilman Eister.
Yes, we have, uh, resignation of Alex Mender, she was a cleaning staff. As of August twenty sixth, I'd like to make that form of a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Brumball?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Make a motion to advertise for a new person for the position.
Are you going at the same hours, at the same rate?
Yes.
Oh, I second, sorry, I apologize.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Brumball?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Yes, uh, moving on, Councilman Savage.
I will make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers to the general fund in the amount fifty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars, thirty-six cents. Uh, there's nothing related to fuels and private grants in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars, fifty-four cents, and payroll in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars, eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Eister? Barnhart?
Yes.
Brumball?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes, uh, moving on, discussion, Mr. Backer.
Um, so recently I was, uh, out for an unexpected extended term agreement and, uh, rights knows came in during that time. And some individuals that, uh, submitted those rights knows expressed some concern regarding, uh, not having a backup individual. Um, well, it's not applied by law, but their concern is valid. Um, I think that, uh, we really do need to consider having a backup right to know. I have been, uh, a designated right to know officer now that I'm resigning, but also a backup right to know officer. Um, you know, the city's already been moving toward cross-training staff for, uh, to ensure continuity. So I think, you know, for, to ensure, um, expedience and responsiveness, um, I think that the city should really have a backup right to know officer. So I just wanted to, you know, I know we've talked about that in the past, but I think that's something that council really should, uh, talk to do.
Any wants to have a comment on that? All right, uh, moving on, we do have a few announcements. Uh, Music from the Park will be Tuesday, August twelfth, from seven to eight thirty. River Fest will be Friday, eight, I see, eight o'clock, August fifteenth and Saturday, August sixteenth, down at the Merrill Fields Park. Last day, the pool will be open will be Saturday, August sixteenth. Music from the Park will also take place on August nineteenth from seven to thirty. The next council meeting will take place on August twenty fifth here at six fifteen in the council chambers. At this time, is there any public comment at this time? Please say your name, sir?
We're sure, Sunbury Fire Department Secretary. Uh, several months ago, the council approved fifty thousand dollars for the, for the fire department to consolidate the rest of the post company. That did not come to fruition. So I'd like to ask if council could reallocate that money towards the consolidation expense for the entire Sunbury Fire Department.
It should go there. It should go there.
I know, I think as a formality I'm asking, that I know was allocated for the original purpose, I don't know.
But I'm wondering, would like to make sure that somebody didn't spend money already.
Yeah, that's.
Well, it should have been the council vote to spend fifty thousand dollars, so it better, it better still be there else we have major problems. Agree?
Yeah.
Any other pub? Sorry. Another phone call, okay? Any other, uh, public comment? Please say your name, sir?
Phil Brown. I, I don't know, maybe you guys might want to look into researching a little bit of the past. With the scooters and the bikes and the way things are now, walking the streets from Sunbury are getting a little treacherous. I know that, I do a lot. It used to be a time, the downtown business district, I don't think it went as far as race, and I don't think it went beyond chestnut. But there used to be a time that every street corner was painted, Jimmy, you can remember that, this shouldn't be. No bicycles, no skateboards, the, the bicycles and skateboards were all there, were there. Were allowed in the downtown vicinity, in the business district, on the sidewalks. Then they came through and they put all the handicapped sidewalks and corners, and all that stuff was tore up and never put back down again. I believe that we should still have city ordinance against buying that stuff into downtown. They would have to be updated now because they're going to get around it because everything's electric. They're going to say it's not bicycle, not skateboard. You'd have to update the ordinance. But it's walking streets of Sunbury sometimes, and I'm walking out on the street to get away from the bicycles and scooters and bikes. And they're going way over twenty-three mile an hour and they're carrying two passengers down the road. There used to be a fine line, if I'm not mistaken, driving and or parking on the sidewalk was a parking violation and a moving violation. After vehicles on Market Street, I'm parked on the sidewalk. If you're felt dead on the sidewalk, park it somewhere on that street, park it somewhere else. I had this worked for twenty years, never once have I ever put it on a sidewalk. There's no reason for that, I mean, it's just basic downtown where it's been at all day. So it's went to research those things. Parking and electric scooters and bicycles and everything in the, in the downtown district.
Thank you, sir. Public comment, please say your name, ma'am.
Sandra Hines. I would like to add on to, can Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil's the name.
Um, his, his comments. I agree, I don't have a problem with the handicap scooters. Um, I think it was Saturday, my husband and I were going down Market Street. We stopped at Fifth and, and Market, nearby Zion Church. A scooter, uh, a motorbike is what it was, crossed in front of us. We were stopped, they crossed in front of us. We turned the corner and they not only beat us up to Third Street, they crossed in front of us at Third Street. That's way too fast for anything on a sidewalk. And this, these trucks that parked up on the sidewalks, they're breaking that down. It's costing the city money for that, and they can, they can park a block away and walk a few feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, ma'am? No, no, that's your.
Um, I just question, um, listening to Susskowhanna Avenue, so phase one is completed in Susskowhanna Avenue? Yeah. So, and I know this question has been asked several times, and, um, so the six hundred and seventy dollars and sixteen cents that went to repair six hundred Susskowhanna Avenue, who paid for those repairs?
It's me, the top of the room.
I was trying to avoid that, but, um, that's a shame.
It's a shame, well, it's for the winner.
So she paid for that?
She did.
So who, so who, where did those monies come from on the city to pay for those?
Out of the project.
So, I'm looking at a check here that says loss revenue. It came out of grant, private grant. I'm looking at the check that was written to H N's Fall Construction for six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents out of the private grant to encourage the loss.
Okay, that's the grant. It got through the project.
So I think, um, if I can add this, so usually typically when the, um, uh, project money comes in, it was put into a private grant, so it wasn't in the general fund to spend. So then when something comes out of that, project comes out of there, so that it's also there for the, uh, auditing reimbursement part of it too. So it's strikeable because it sits in a different account.
I'm just asking you, as I asked before, we didn't get, we didn't get the answer to that question, which was who paid for it? And what do you expect from that?
I don't remember being asked that question.
You were twice, it's on me again.
I was asked, I was asked about that check?
You were asked about who paid for the repairs, of course.
And I didn't get an answer?
No, sir, it's on me again.
I should tell you, too. Who was that?
I can, I can find you to do that.
That's not necessary. Spears decided, I don't remember being asked.
Maybe I should just ask.
I asked when, uh, it was about the final change order, who was paying for it? He said how we have a meeting next, we have a meeting, we look into it, the meeting look into it. And then last about the Mr. Suoff sidewalk, she said, we're not going to, we're not going to involve ourselves because it was a matter between the contractor and the homeowner themselves.
Well, I reached out to Mr. Suoff too, because I'm really trying to understand how that happened, that we have a citizen, that we have a contractor and a citizen, and there being sidewalks being done, and then the citizen came to the council to let those sidewalks repaired. So I'm, I'm just understanding that process. And I have reached out to Brian and him and I will have a conversation. I'm just really confused as to what, did a contractor talk to a citizen and make an agreement to put sidewalks on? Is that what happened then? Is that normal practice for a contractor to do that?
It happens all the time.
All the time, but then, then the resident citizen comes back to the city and then wants it repaired because there was issues?
Yes. That's what happened in this case.
Oh, yeah. So I guess my question is, is, is that, why does that, why is that allowed to happen?
What part?
The citizen asking the contractor that's contracting with the city.
They're private individuals, they can talk to whoever they want. They can ask any, if our contractor's out in the street and we're paving or we're doing concrete work and the homeowner walks up and says, hey, would you mind paving my driveway? And they say, well, not much, and they work out a deal and that's between them. You don't get involved, and that happens on every construction project in history.
Okay, so then Mr. Suoff came here because then there was an issue with what was done when the city. So I guess that's just, it's just, it's just really murky, kind of, with the project.
What's murky about?
Well, I think when, you know, like you said, I guess if that's best, if that's normal practice for contractors, for citizens to come out and say, hey, we're paving this, and then will you do mine, and they're paying for it. And then what gets murky is just what happened, citizen coming back asking for his payments to be repaired when they weren't done correct.
Like you just said, it's between the contractor and the contractor.
No, I just want it creates a issue, which it did, but then you throw, you put it back on the, on the contractor. So, so be it, as long as we're not, the city's not paying for the repairs, then that's okay. That was my question.
So we ask for the no.
Yeah, but I'll bring it up next time.
Okay.
You're welcome, then. I'll excuse and pass them.
That's okay, Jill.
No, it's okay.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, sir?
Uh, Trevor Marshall. Um, I'm just curious if the council is aware of the, uh, details of the announcements that have been made tonight with the Music in the Park.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing anything.
Sure, um, I was asking if the council is aware of the, uh, details such as parking information or ADA accessibility with the, uh...
So parking, like I said, takes place outside in the park here, so they can park around on Market Street. And there's different handicap accessibility ramps coming into the park that if anyone does have a disability, they can access it through that line.
Um, is there, uh... Is there plans to have measuring attendance at these?
What, what do you mean measuring attendance? We have the council meeting or out of Music in the Park?
Out at the, at the festivals, of the things that the city does for their citizens.
I mean, that's up to the organi-, uh, the organizer of the event, if they choose to take attendance, that's their choice. But like I said, if it's, if it's own private, not private, but if, if it's an outside organization, that's up to them to take those numbers and those statistics. It's not like council sends someone out there to say, hey, we have a hundred people show up to Music in the Park, or we had twenty-five or two, whatever. It's up to that individual organization they choose to take statistics on, you know, their own event.
How are we measuring then that the community itself has benefited from these events?
I mean, it's just, it goes back to just the public input, like, for example, when, beginning of the, I think it was the end of May or beginning of June, we didn't get, uh, the grant right away. There was a lot of public outcry of individuals who do, uh, partake in the Music in the Park that's free on the different Tuesdays that it's offered. So whether it's one, a hundred, a thousand, there's still a benefit. It may not be benefiting a lot, but it does benefit some individuals who, you know, may live in the downtown or maybe passing through or just, hey, I'm going to Subway, hey, Music in the Park, they stop on out. So, you know, I would say it's a measure of, you know, people, but it's a matter of, like, we did get a lot of input when people were, hey, we didn't get, we didn't get the money right away to have it. There was a lot of public outcry and, you know, we got lucky enough and were able to, you know, raise funds by different organizations and the grant to come in and get the money for the people who, you know, had their concerns how it was not taking place.
Um, is there a way that we can be less reactive about those things and more proactive as in?
What do you mean, what do you mean react, what do you?
Well, you said that we were lucky enough to... Well, you said that we were lucky enough to.
Well, like I said, when you apply for a grant, a grant is never guaranteed. So like we put the grants in, you know, we plan for them, but at the same time, if we don't get them, obviously, if there's no funds there, there's no funds there. But like we had people step up and donate funds so we could have it. We don't wanna make that a regular thing, but you know, there's no way, like there's no grants guaranteed, so we try our best to plan, you know, back in January and February and say, hey, do we have the money or not? Can we get other resources? It just took longer this year to get it than we'd like to.
Is, are any of the council planning on attending like River Fest, the, a River Fest or Music at the, in the park?
I mean, I normally go down to the River Fest because on the weekend, that's somewhere in my less busy time. I can't speak for the rest of the council, like officials, but normally we try to, like to support as many events as we can, you know, depending on what our schedule seems fit and our own personal lives.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right, adjourn this meeting.